Okay, correspondence? Okay. Public comment. Is there anybody signed up for public comment? Oh, you're signed up?
I am.
Okay, and you've heard the comment before.
Yes. And can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Not as many people as I said. I am speaking as the sixth grade graduation coordinator, actually, for PTO. Just a quick update, we have 34 kids who have paid their graduation activity dues as of this afternoon. There may be more sitting in my email. So we have that going on. Field day is booked for May 19th, and I have spoken with the Bethany coordinator, and we are on track. This year, we do not have the burden of cost for the high school bus or the lunches for the staff and volunteers. They are taking on that cost at Bethany, so that's good for us. The pool party is booked, as is tradition, and I believe graduation has been set for June 15th. I haven't heard a change.
You can tell me when.
And, oh, okay. And Lynn Lucas in the office has done her part, and we seem to be on a really good track with everything. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. And your book is on a really great track. No meeting this week, as Judy is on vacation.
Was there anybody else mark up for public comment? No. Okay, thank you. All right. The consent agenda. Do we have anything to pull out?
Yeah, let's pull out the March 20th meeting minutes.
Okay. So we're gonna pull out the March 20th meeting minutes. And do we need to talk about those, or should we go ahead with the rest of it?
Move approval of the rest of the consent agenda.
Second. Okay. Any discussion?
Karen to Karen.
Karen to Karen. K's. Okay. All those in favor?
Okay.
And under minutes, I was just going to suggest a clarification on the discussion about, in the description of our discussion, the class size guidelines. Perhaps just a sentence at the beginning reading that the board discussed a proposal to increase class guidelines. Just to clarify the context in which the various comments were made. Okay. Oh, Pam to second. Okay. All right.
As amended.
Okay. The minutes as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. Let's see. We're up to the PTO update. Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
So we had the book fair right before spring break. It was a very successful book fair. Brought in a little over $15,000. Out of that, PTO will get $39.08 in profit. And we also gave almost $2,700 in free books to teachers and library students. So that's always a great incentive. Family Night was a big hit. Andy the Reading Dog was there, I think that. And a little certain Kazaz. The book swap will be the week of May 14th, 15th, whatever that Monday is. So that's the next thing there. Jess has already talked about some great activities. The only other major thing to mark out is Quasi Night. That's the night where BRS takes over Quasi Music Park. That's June 1st. Tickets are on sale via My Payments Plus for that. People have already started buying. The only clarification that we seem to need to get out to parents is that a lot of people are just buying one ticket, but adults also have to pay to enter the park, and you cannot drop off your child. It's not a drop-off event. It can't be.
That would be a lot of time.
Right? A lot of people are just buying one ticket, and we're like, where are you going? We can't be in front of our own. So we're trying to get the word out that you need to also buy a ticket for yourself. If that doesn't happen ahead of time when the parents arrive, you can also purchase, we will tell them to purchase a ticket themselves there. So My Payments Plus has that ready, and Quasi Night is Thursday, June 1st. And should we agree with that?
Thank you. Thank you very much. If I could just add, the adult ticket information has initially gone out on the Facebook group. So anyone paying attention there has, it's in caps.
Yes.
Adults need tickets. So that initial information has been passed.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Superintendent's report. I grew up already.
Thanks. Just again, before I start my report, I'd like to thank Jess and Amy. They represent a lot of workers who really make a difference for our kids and support our teachers. And I've never seen such a wide-ranging set of grade six goodbye experiences that our kids get, and that's really wonderful. It's a testament to what you guys do. So thank you very much for all you do. Appreciate that very much. I would also like to say that the video clip that you saw there on the news, and the kids do a great job on the news, is a part of a series. We're trying to raise awareness for sustainability and, you know, make sure the kids understand what the building project consisted of. And so we've been talking about this at our facilities subcommittee meeting. I think it's also important to say that Mr. Coolow or Mr. Coolow and I are definitely not gonna quit our day jobs to go on TV. So at any rate, we hope you enjoy those, and I'm not sure where the next one will be, but they've been fun to make. So on to my report. Several of us just came from the Board of Finance special meeting that they had tonight, and I will be happy to tell you, I'm sure most of you are very, very enjoyed about this, that the Board of Finance has added money back to the Board of Education budget to include an SRO for next year, the 2017-2018 school year. This was added back with the understanding that this is gonna be for just next year, and that we as a board are responsible to determine what we need and want, and how we're gonna fund that as we move into the future. But that's good news for so many who have been really advocating for that. And so just wanted to let you know about that. That happened just a little while ago over at Town Hall. Despite that, as you know, our $200,000 worth of other reductions still stands, and the next part of the process for the budget in town is the Monday, May 15th town vote on the budget. So that will be over at, again, the Center School Building, as I understand it, right in the gymnasium, as it always has. Our pre-K population, those students who we are required to make sure that we service the needs that they have, three- and four-year-olds continues to rise quite a bit from past years. And so we are just watching that very closely, and it's anticipated that we'll be meeting the need for this growing need through the allocation or reallocation of our existing special services faculty and staff as we move into next year. So that's something just for the board to keep in mind. The multi-age group had a great orientation program on two different nights, March 22nd as well as March 30th, for prospective parents. Presentation on the 22nd and follow-up Q and A on the 30th. And so that was a great thing to attend. And applications close this Friday for those parents who are looking to take advantage of that opportunity. Our fifth grade students participated in the science Connecticut Mastery Test that was administered. It was administered on Monday, April 3rd. This was the first year that statewide this was done online versus paper and pencil. And the result is, in the past, will not be received until sometime in the summer. We had a tri-state visit. It was a follow-up visit that took place on March 27th here at Beecher Road. Six visiting educators from the tri-state area, New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, came and reviewed our work and progress in the area of math. You probably remember that from a couple of years ago, when math was reviewed. And obviously, an important quality of a high-performing district is constantly being involved in the process of self-study and continuous improvement. The outcomes of what we saw and what we discussed was that there has been improvement in the area of curriculum as we move forward in that area, as well as the student outcomes as we measure those outcomes on different assessments. So that's good to see that, and there'll be more coming on a tri-state presentation to the board, either in May or June. We'll be discussing that a few, a little later in the agenda. Getting your thoughts about that. We continue to train our staff members for the assault and abuse prevention and awareness program that is mandated by the state. We trained our teaching assistants and some other staff members on April 4th and April 6th. This was very similar to the training that our teachers received earlier in the year. And this is all in conjunction with the organization that conducted the informational night back in March. So we're moving forward in that area, taking care of the mandates that we need to do for that. We had a great Be Kind this week, March 27th through March 31st. A lot of great activities took place around Beecher Road School to highlight what a kind environment and what a kind community we are. Compliments circles, be kind to the earth, plant a seed. Murals and touchstones, caring wall, and a school-wide read aloud. Daily announcements were made to emphasize cooperation, assertion, responsibility, empathy, and self-control. Obviously, the words made up from cares. And also Spirit Week was celebrated in conjunction, and they had Crazy Hair Hat Day, and Sports Day, and Mismatch Day, which some of us do every day anyway. And Twin Day, and also the BRS Spirit Day. So that was great to see. And we had an additional CARES assembly after the Be Kindness Week, or in conjunction with that, and that was held in the South Gym on April 19th, just last week. Empathy and self-control were the two areas that were focused on. How many people here in the audience had a chance to go to the Drama Club presentation? What a great presentation, my first one here. And The Jungle Book was presented by our Drama Club on March 30th and March 31st, and we had just tremendous acting, singing, and dancing by our talented kids. Performing to a sellout crowd, of course, very enthusiastic. I'm amazed at the costume designs and the scenery that were done. When that curtain opened, it was just magnificent. So I'd just like to thank the members who really spearheaded this and really directed this, BJ Ahern, Teresa Remia, Jeanne Cherlignio, and Jen Cooper. And of course, the extended director, Kathy Salinardi, for coordinating. So thank you for a great Drama Club this year. Speaking of drama, many of us on the Board of Education and administration were able to attend a joint evening on April 7th, the night before vacation started. And this was the BOA superintendent and BOA Boards of Education joining together for dinner in AMAT High School, having a chance to talk with each other, get to know each other a little bit better, and then also being treated to a great presentation by the AMAT Drama Club fiddler on the roof. So for those of us who were there, it was a great evening and an opportunity. I've met a lot of new board members from other districts that I never had met before. So hoping we do that again sometime. And I'll just close by saying that graduation and the last day of school are not very far off, June 15th. And I'm sure Jeanne will talk maybe a little bit more about that. That concludes my superintendent's update.
Does anybody have anything for Bob, any items? And I'm guessing we have. Yep. Great.
Hi, everyone. I would just like to also say thank you for the book fair. There were so many volunteers, and Family Night, so many people. But our student council was also present with their advisors, and as we heard, Andy the Reading Dog and selling some baked goods. So it just really is a great community event, aside from being a fundraiser. So thank you to everyone who helped. We had a beginning band concert last week, and I think we have almost outgrown the self-assembly room. The progress that the students have made from the beginning, when they started in those first few notes, and yes, it might be hot cross buns, but it is really amazing. The sound was excellent. The students were so proud, and we really appreciate the support of the parents. We were standing room only, which only fares well for our band upcoming, because the numbers were almost eight students, I think. And that's just for the grade. So it was fantastic. So thank you to everyone who attended, and to Mr. Lutch, and all the students for their hard work. We've had, it was great. We had many collaborations here, but this year, we extended one of the collaborations to one of our kindergarten classes with a sixth grade, with their sixth grade reading buddies. And so it was art and writing, and as you may know, we usually visit British Art Center. This year, this particular sixth grade class went with their buddies from kindergarten. And if you happen to see, when you leave here, there is just a beautiful array of photographs, pictures of the day. They've been working with them all year, and the students have done some self-portraits in a 3D box about themselves, and they shared that with the kindergarten students, and then there was some writing involved for the older students, of which that was also shared. But the actual event, the day of the trip, it was priceless. So seeing they were so excited, and I think the sixth graders might have enjoyed it even more than the kindergartners. They were in charge of their buddy. And so a wonderful experience. We hope to expand that a little more for next year. We tried a little something new, and love when new ideas come our way, and we certainly encourage them. We, a few other traditions were continued. Swim for heart, and that was fifth grade, and swim Olympics in sixth grade. Two days in a row, lots of time in the pool, lots of swimming involved. Kind of makes sometimes me a little nervous when we're all down there in the pool, but I cannot compliment the physical education teachers enough. And the teachers who supported it and were down there, and all of the teachers who came to just observe, to cheer on the students. Great event. Again, thank you to the phys ed department. The Salmon River Trip, another time-honored tradition here at Beecher. A little cold and chilly that day, and fortunately, it was only the salmon that went swimming, so no monkey film.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there was a couple of swank paintings.
Doesn't work. Not too bad. But the students spent a great deal of time in fourth grade, reading, writing, studying, learning about the lifecycle of the salmon. And to have this as a culmination is really a great experience for them. Something that they all look forward to. You heard some mention about some sixth grade activities that are happening. There is one of our e-notifiers going out tomorrow to all of the sixth grade families, and it really is just a listing. Just some reminders, here are the things coming up. It is not an exhaustive list, but there are the dates for day of graduation, the dates for regular promotion ceremony, the field trips for the science experiences that the sixth graders have at Joshua's Cove and Hammond Ascent. A reminder about the PTO, you know, their events that are happening. So that will go out tomorrow, as well as information about Quasi on Friday in my principal's message. So we're trying to get as many forms of communication as possible. Sixth grade students don't always empty the backpack for the notices, so that's how we try to reach as many families as we can. I think that's it for me. Is there any questions? It's been a busy time around here the last few weeks. All right. Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
So the next item we have is a vision and mission statement update. And I'm looking forward, for this time right now, to get all the board's input and thoughts around this area. A mission and vision, obviously, is something that drives and guides the current and future direction of an organization, and it does for our school and our district. Our new strategic plan that was rolled out in January does seek to review our current mission and vision statement, which was crafted a few years back. We want to review it, and we only want to revise it as necessary, because a lot of time is put into it back at that point. We are, though, looking also to just reflect on the fact that we want to make sure that our vision and mission statements are concise enough that if I bumped into you at the grocery store and I said, "Where do your kids go to school?" And they go to Beecher Road School. So tell me what all about Beecher Road School. What's it all about? And you'd be able to tell me in a couple sentences, a mission and vision, because it would be right on the tip of your tongue. So that's one of the things that I think we want to try to work towards in this process. So tonight, I'm looking for the board's input and thoughts. There is a representative committee that has started to work, and it's a committee made up of a variety of stakeholders in the organization. And again, Margaret is the person who will bring your thoughts and input back and serve as your representative to that group in this process. In your work packet, you've got a two-sided handout, and one has the picture of the Beecher Owl, of course, and it has our current mission and vision. And on the other side, it has just a reminder about what mission statements and vision statements are. And if I just quickly highlight mission statements, you really talk about the present state or purpose of an organization, usually written succinctly in a sentence or two, and you should be able to recall those if you're someone who's part of that organization. There's a few examples here of some mission statements of some districts throughout Connecticut. Likewise, in a vision statement, it's more talking about the desired future state of the organization, providing some inspiration, as a North Star. And we want the vision statements also to be written in such a succinct way that you can recall them as well. And there's a couple of examples of effective vision statements. So Margaret is going to lead us through this, but I know that we'll launch your thoughts about this and eventually probably focus in on what's a word that you would definitely want to make sure we did not miss, or a word that you felt really strong about in terms of vision and mission statements as we do our work together.
So one thing I wanted to say, we had one meeting so far of the group working on this. And I am always impressed. You know, it was at 7:30 in the morning, you know, people came, staff, you know, came before, you know, they had to run to their classrooms. Everybody was enthusiastic. Everybody was upbeat about doing this. Everybody, you know, said, you know, this is something that they're, you know, excited about. So I am, I continue to be impressed by the level of enthusiasm that people can bring to yet another group, you know, that they're participating in. And people were genuinely excited. So, and we can do whatever, you know, people want. What I thought we might do is go around if people have, you know, ideas about the vision and mission, what they would like to see as part of either the vision or the mission. We talked about this last month in terms of, you know, what we were gonna do tonight. And then, like Bob said, at the end, if we could maybe go around and just one word that you would want to make sure is included in the vision statement and in the mission statement, or one concept that you think is critical. So do people want to just talk about what they, you don't want to see, and then we can, you know, it can be words that are already there or words that are missing from here? Ideas that, you know, you don't see that you think are critical to the process? And I know people, you know, have had a chance to kind of think about it.
Is this the current mission or is this the one that Bob presented?
No. This is the current mission and vision, exactly off the website.
Emily, that's a good point. So the one that I had put sort of as a template, kind of an idea on that three-year plan, I think, don't think about that one. That was just to give an idea, as something we're working on, we're working towards.
Yeah, no, I thought it would just be helpful to see that, to kind of think about how you had thought about it. You know, as an example. Since, you know, I feel like you saw this and thought that it needed to be, there needed to be some evolution.
So what I will say, in thinking about what you're saying there, a lot of what, in that, and I don't want that to be necessarily the be-all, have-to, but I would say that on that, what is a mission statement, is some of the examples that I included here. Probably in the first example, the third example, I had a lot of the different kinds of words that I probably brought out on that one, to some degree. So it's not the exact wording, but it's had some of the flavor of that.
So do people kind of want to go around and talk a little bit about what they see as important? Would we be talking about our ideas about who the school is, or should we? Both. Because mission is, to an extent, you know, where we are now, or where, you know, where we think we are. And then vision is what would we like to be ultimately. And in the first meeting we had, there was, you know, discussion about, especially in some of the examples, all the commas. Like, you know, we don't want a statement that has like 15 commas. We don't carry, you know, collaborative and good citizens in, you know, like 15 words. So there is, you know, somewhat of, as Bob said, the idea that it's concise enough that our kids will know, you know, what's the mission and vision statement of the school. Our staff will know, our parents will know, and ideally, our community will know. So that's, you know, again, I think a lot of Bob's impetus in making this, you know, something that we work on, is to make it something very relevant to all of the constituents involved. So Nancy, I think you had your hand up.
Just to start it off.
Okay.
But I want to say thank you to Bob for bringing this up, because not everyone would bring it up necessarily. And it's really great, because as we reflect on this, and I know it's up on your wall, it does seem dated, and it does seem to need a recharge. And thank you also for providing the definitions, because I think that's really important. So clearly, our vision statement isn't aspirational and isn't inspirational at this time. It's actually more descriptive of some of the how-tos. I guess one thing I was wondering is if we might also, in this exercise, consider strategic objectives. So usually, mission is the snapshot of where we are, what we are trying to do on a daily basis. Vision is typically very aspirational, where we want to be, the future state of what we're, you know, a lot of the language that you've used to define it. And strategic objectives is some of the things that we've kind of talked about in different exercises, of how do we get there? What are some concrete ways that we might take steps to reach our mission and vision? And those are things that the board and, you know, the administration can sort of make sure that we are aligned on a daily basis, like what are our metrics for getting and reaching it, so that we actually have some connection with the day-to-day. So on that front, I guess, I think it's a great opportunity for really to understand where our children are going to be. I think I'm very convinced that this state that our, when our children become adults, that world is gonna look very different from the one that I grew up in. And yet, I think the classroom right now is similar to what I had in some ways. So I wonder if it's an opportunity for us to really try to think aspirationally about the complexity of the world, and how we can add language here that really understands that the world that we're going, that our children will be operating in will have technological advances beyond our understanding. I don't know how to encapsulate that in language, but I'm throwing it out there that this might be a good opportunity, that we, when people read our mission and vision, they see Beecher as an innovative, dynamic place that really understands the complexity of the world.
Okay. I don't want to put anybody on the spot. If people want to offer, you know, thoughts, that's great. If they don't, that's fine, too.
Lisa? I like very much what Nancy had to say, particularly the idea of really stretching to think beyond some of the, you know, the things that, you know, wouldn't we all say about our schools? And it's sort of also ties into the idea that if you want something that kids are going to be able to articulate, I think it's very different from the kinds of things that we have here, and it would just be a choice about the direction to go in, about language and phrasing, and how many commas.
Yeah, there's a lot of commas.
But I think it's a great idea to take a different language approach. Something that is something that actually means something to noneducators.
Yeah, and I think it's really hard to do that for kids. It is. I mean, I think that's.
It's two different things. I think you can't communicate so much in so many words to kids unless you're very good.
So is that an idea that it would make sense to have kind of a faculty, you know, mission and vision, and then have something in a different set of language for children? Or make the statement something that both adults and children can understand? I mean, within the ability of the words we choose. We're obviously gonna choose some words that are not familiar to very young students.
I was just gonna say, it might be fun to collaborate with the student council if we articulate a faculty level learning to work on student county.
It's great. Might come up with some things that we never thought.
Yes.
On that note, just want to just insert, I'm not a board member, but I'm just insert a quick comment here, and that is that there's nothing more powerful than a student, regardless of what grade they're in, being able to actually tell you when they walk down the hallway, so what's our school all about? So, you know, keeping it in that language that can work for them, and that's a range for us, for K through six, obviously. But there's also an opportunity to, you know, even though you're trying to, you know, craft something that I can say in a sentence or so, it doesn't mean that you need to leave or get rid of what we already have. What we have already may be, maybe with some review and revising, you know, is the depth of what that one sentence may represent that a student may be able to capture as you walk down the hall. So I guess what I'm saying is that there may be elements of both the faculty aspect and the kid-friendly part of it, that we can play out with what we have now and expanding.
I feel like the, you know, in the third bullet, we say providing a learning community. I feel like the, you know, in the third bullet, we say providing a learning community. But overall, I don't get a sense from reading our current mission that we care much about kind of the concepts of collaboration and, you know, kids learning to work with each other. And that, you know, I think also kind of thinking about what Nancy was saying, that, you know, in this world, you know, we need to make sure that our kids, you know, know how to work effectively in teams and together. And that, you know, education isn't about, you know, you as an individual, you know, succeeding in isolation from others. And so I imagine, again, don't know how to best articulate that in the mission statement, but I would like to see that, you know, coming, coming out of this, you know, more clearly.
I'm, I'm, sorry, I would have, just have to disagree. I see a lot of learning communities at Beecher. I mean, I think just the example.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just announcing, I see Beecher, I'm seeing the wording.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I'm saying I see it at Beecher, I don't see it in this.
I was like, have you just heard about it?
No, 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 no.
Gotcha. Along those theme lines, I would just want to see something that reflects the focus we put on differentiation, which I think kind of ties into respecting individuals, respecting their ideas and their talents and what they have to offer, and helping them find their voice.
I think growth, I think that growth in here, I think that's a word that encompasses a lot of things because in that differentiation, no matter where you are on the scale, if you're growing, if you're growing as a person, if you're growing as a member of a community, I mean, I think that's an important part of things.
Steve?
I agree with everyone who said, and I agree that we should be thinking towards the future. I don't necessarily have anything major to add to what people said, other than if you wanted some words, I think we should somehow get the words curiosity and creativity into the statement somehow. Because I think, you know, everything will change and what we think about what we need to teach the kids today, in 20 years from now, they won't even need to know, and it will be things we haven't even come up with. But I think creating an environment that sort of energizes around curiosity will always be something. And I think that those are two important words, in my opinion, creativity and curiosity, so.
Yeah, one of the examples that you have, Bob, that talks about that, the parent created, I think there's definitely wording, I think, in some of your examples that you are hitting on, speak to what you just said.
And I think going forward with the mission, I mean, obviously people working on the words of this. Sometimes I think it's easier to scrap what we have instead of trying to change things because there's so many words in there that you don't want to take out and say, well, that's important, that's important. Just start with what it is that is important. What are the three things or the five things behind the school and sort of move forward with that, rather than kind of figure out what has to come out or be replaced with.
Is there anybody else who has?
I would just agree with what's been said here. I agree, Steve, that curiosity and creativity are two really important components that need to be included. And I think that a lifelong learning is, is another key component that we need to include. So that kids understand it, it doesn't stop at, in, in the classroom, it doesn't stop at school. It's a thing that continues throughout your life and that, that's what we want to encourage. And so I would, I would think that that would be something that we should include as well.
Karen? The last thing I would say is just that almost every statement has this component, but it's something about being a global citizen, having a level of global awareness and living in a global community.
Sounds like we might add more commas.
As long as we use the Oxford comma, it's a standard, you know, in middle school, the Oxford comma.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa?
As far as like specific words, I would like to see them there, or concepts, just the concept of being active learners, driven, learning rather than passive.
Curriculum. And also just, you know, to what Lynette and Lisa were saying, you know, to me, it's not just the lifelong learner, but instilling, you know, kind of a, I don't know, love for or joy for, and maybe this is the acquisitiveness or the curiosity, but that, you know, I don't, I want, you know, my kids to be wanting to learn for whatever they've learned. I want them to be engaged and excited by where they're at.
Did you say?
I guess just to put a second point about doing something like values or strategic objectives is, I don't think it's appropriate for the mission or vision, but some language around we value the arts as an important integral part of the learning process. Or something along those lines where the left brain is complementing the right brain. And even though when this, when we see technology and all these other components are a little bit more technical, we still have the tradition of the arts in our learning process. And again, I don't think it's appropriate necessarily for mission and vision, but I think for strategic objectives, that reaffirms those types of core values.
And one of, one of the sets of words that I thought was important is the whole child, you know, physically. And that's an idea of, you know, the arts, the physical education, and that's a social, emotional, you know, the whole child is, is what we're targeting, not the bits of the child. So, so I don't know that we need to go and pick out one word since I think that, that we did, you know, people did kind of mention specific words. And it's not that this is, you know, the last chance for anything and I'm the representative to the group. As work occurs, I will come back with what's going on. And if people have thoughts in between, you know, you can send them, send them to me. And, you know, I'll make sure that we talk about them in the group. Was there anything else, Bob, that you wanted to?
No, it's been very helpful. You folks have been very thoughtful about, there will be either a lot of decisions made or a lot of commas left.
People have already said things about the commas.
This is good. I'm going to make sure everybody hasn't had a chance to say what they want to say.
Okay. Okay, great.
Great, thank you very much. So under the superintendent's report, the next, actually the next board conversation we're going to have is something we've been hoping to have for a while, and I'm actually looking forward to it in terms of just being able to hear your thoughts. I think there's no, there's no doubt, there's no secret that the past year, there's been a lot of news, a lot of world news, a lot of national news. Things continue. And I think a real, a real reasonable and authentic question is coming out, what is the direction and support that we give to teachers to address interesting, challenging topics, current events, and so on and so forth? So I think it's, it's important for the board to have that conversation. So as an administrative team, we understand what you're thinking, but also we also prepare a little bit of information for you. So at least it gives you a little snapshot of, you know, what, what kind of a mindset are, as a staff and faculty operating in right now. And I'm just going to quickly just say a couple of things, and then I'm going to invite Gina, Claire, and Lori Patrick to, to present a few slides of just some information for you as a sort of a backdrop for your conversation. I will quickly say that there is no scientific or magic formula for difficult conversations. And a lot of what I believe what teachers do and staff members do is embedded in their professional judgment and their professional training. I think some of the things that guide us along the way is certainly a sensitivity to our students, a sensitivity to our families, and also a sensitivity to the topics that may be brought up in a classroom, whether it's spontaneous or not. We, I think we, as a staff, we try to be very factual, we try to stay on the factual side of things without making judgments. And I think we try whenever something is brought up or whenever, you know, an opportunity of the current event is to really tie it to curriculum, not to squelch the curiosity or the enthusiasm or the questions that a student has, but at the same time trying to stay as factual as possible. I think professional judgment is embedded in all of this as we think about, you know, what's developmentally appropriate in conversation with a student in kindergarten versus in grade six. Sometimes what the professional judgment that a teacher or a staff member uses to say, you know, something, I think this may not be something we want to talk about here, but it may be something that's better to talk about at home. We also, we also teach to certain competencies in this area. We will hear a little bit about our information literacy instruction that goes on that helps in this area. And bottom, bottom line, I think what, what we do is, you know, when we really need more help, we utilize the professionals in our staff. I call them the team, the support team, our school psychologists and social workers who are there, who are highly trained, who have professional organizations that they're hooked into, that actually have many resources in those professional organizations. And really that alone, professional development helps to guide us in what to do and how to, how to maneuver through different areas. So I'm going to stop talking, and I'm going to ask Claire and Gina and Lori to just present a couple of slides here of information. Do you want to, we'll just kind of move to the side. Hopefully this will be helpful for you.
Well, Bob, thank you for that very thorough introduction.
I'm going to take your, you want to put him over or?
I think you can hear me, I'm good.
Yeah.
So as Bob said, we are just here to kind of give you a little bit of a picture of how we handle some difficult topics. I will reiterate, there is no formula. So we use some of the things that we know and some of the things that we are built upon. The first one clearly is the responsive classroom model. It is the foundation of who we are. We do train our staff, we are fortunate to have people to do so, as you are well aware. This includes our teacher assistants and, and often our interns. But one of the foundations for that is to set clear expectations in how we communicate our opinions, but also respect others. Because that is, in any community conversation, that is the bottom line, that everyone is entitled to their own opinion as long as what you say and how you say it is respectful. And moving forward from there, I will, Claire?
And everything we talk about goes hand in hand, we're all tied in together, nothing is in isolation. Our safe school climate practices are really things that we do to give the kids the tools that they need to have discussions, the tools, the words, to have the discussions about some of the topics that may come up through our CARES assembly, our be kind activities, we model expected behaviors. And I think that's the key, is we model how you might interact during a difficult discussion. What's an expected behavior? What's a positive way to react versus a negative way? So some of the things we may see on the media may show us some negative behaviors that people are using to interact. What's the more positive way to do that? So throughout our activities, whether we're posting expectations or doing role-playing like we did during our last CARES assembly, we're trying to give kids the tools to also handle some of the things they may hear and say.
To communication, that, under that umbrella are administrators to teachers. What is our planned reaction? If we know that this is a topic in our curriculum, what do you want to talk about? I'll take sixth grade, social issue, book clubs, things that affect students of that age. Fifth grade maniac, the D, topics come up. So what are the planned ways in which you are going to address that? Communication from teachers to students. This one requires the most sensitivity and the most professional judgment, can be a one-on-one conversation. And it can be okay sometimes to say that that topic is not really where we are. We're going to get back to the business at hand and then later have a conversation individually with it, with a student. And then school to home communication. Because that might require another conversation from the teacher to the parent or administrator of the parent to say, this came up, it might be something a child's dealing with in their life. It might be something that happened internally at Beecher. Or it might be something that's affected everyone outside of the Beecher community. Fortunately, we don't have these trends, but we do have isolated incidences both within and outside of the Beecher own school community. So it's that sensitivity. I will reiterate what Bob said. If it is something that is both within our curriculum, that we are talking about, a difficult topic, we do try to stick to factual things. We certainly, and you'll hear in just a few minutes from Lori Patrick, we rely on our library media staff to get us developmentally appropriate resources. They are one of our best resources to go to for literature, for maybe research sites for students if they are looking up information. So you'll hear from Lori in just a minute. And then finally, we need to respect the desire of what parents want students to know. This really happens when it's an issue outside the Beecher community. Something that's happened, maybe it's a tragedy. And we need to try to respect what it is that parents want children exposed to. And we always, again, have to be very developmentally appropriate.
Lori?
Hi, we feel that information literacy really forms the basis for lifelong learning. And we know that today's students have access to a lot of information and in many different types of formats. And so we feel that we really need to help students develop some kind of strategies for making sense of all this information. And so one of the first things we would look at are the different formats that are there. What is the, how are different formats organized differently? What kind of tech structures might we be using? How do I navigate this information to find the answers to my questions? And then we move on to what, the information itself. And that begins like in kindergarten and first grade, we start to look at print resources and we say, well, who's the author? And is this a fiction, a story, or is it a non-fiction? Is it fact or is it a story? And then that moves into the higher grades with like digital resources. And we take those same questions and we start to look at them in a much more in-depth than we did originally. We're still looking at like, who is the author? What is the purpose of the author in publishing this information? What's the expertise of this author? Is this information factual or is it fact or is it opinion? And in that opinion, did we have just the opinion of the author? Did we have diverse opinions that are being presented? And then we look further at that information and say, so is that opinion or those facts, are they supported by arguments here? And finally, we say, look at many different types of resources and formats. And are those opinions and facts actually either supported or contradicted in other resources? And so we look at information from that point of view as well. So those are some of the types of questions that we start to look at and have kids question, students question when they're looking at information. We also are concerned about the ethical use of information. We want to make sure that students are, respect copyright and that they understand intellectual property rights. We do this oftentimes through citation at almost every grade level. We started at some low, like in print resources and moved it all the way up to all the digital resources by sixth grade. And we also want them to know legal guidelines for both owning, using, and sharing information. Because that's important for them to understand. And finally, we want to make sure that when students are using social tools, online tools, that they understand that we can model for them what it means to manage and develop your own personal digital identity and how that identity is permanent. So you may think that you're in fifth and sixth grade today, but you know, you are already beginning to develop your own reputation, your own digital footprint here. And a reminder that this is often, digital actions are often permanent. And so we want students to be aware of that and to help develop that for themselves. So those are just some of the highlights of the way that we approach information we use in our classrooms. And I hope that helps your conversation.
Thank you. Thank you.
And just to echo what Bob and Gina said, we do have additional supports and resources available to our teachers and our students here. The one thing that our team would look closely at is some of the student reactions based on some of their own experiences that might, they might need, require additional support. Teachers may need additional information to how to handle a certain topic. Nurses, psychologists, school social workers are all available to the teachers and to the students. But again, one of our significant concerns would be a student reaction or student reaction to something that's occurring. Or concerns that parents may have where they require some additional information or would like to share additional information with our team, the school-wide team, about their child and how they have reacted to something that's occurred. Our team does have a lot of resources to go to, whether it be their national associations, whether it be their peers in their field. We've sent staff to lots of training and lots of workshops. Most recently in the last year, focus has been on anxiety that can be related to events that have been occurring around them or experiences they have had. So, and so we really try to keep up to date through our professional development time, through our release time on what's going on around us in the world and what resources are there to help our kids as far as article, professional articles and magazines and resources such as that. We do have a nice library in our. We do have a nice library in our workshop, not workshop, in our office area that teachers can access that can help them with specific bits of information.
Something interesting closing, I think that, thinking back to this fall, I think we really, we really believed and saw our teachers and staff in action at different points along the way. Trusting that what's embedded in their professional training and their professional judgment is what works best on an everyday basis. But one of the things that we did bring out, I know in full faculty, as well as a couple of private conversations, was just the reiterance of, you know, if you're, if you yourself or your student may be experiencing questions or concerns or whatever, not to go it alone, but to make use of the resources that we do have as a team, school team, that is there. And because those people are more highly trained and they work in that area all the time. So I think, and I'll say just, you know, just very reflectively, you know, spending a few minutes putting this together, more than a few minutes, but a little more than a few minutes, putting these thoughts together, it's helped us to really think about sort of, so do all of our teachers have this embedded in their toolbox or not? So this, the things that we're bringing out here may be things that we go back to the faculty to make sure we are all on the same page, you know, that, you know, even though we trust that, sometimes you need to make sure we all have the same common understanding and flow of this. So I hope that's helpful and we'll let the board go ahead and talk a little bit more.
Okay. I thought that was very helpful. And I, you know, I know that a couple of times, you know, what you said was, you know, we trust in the professionals, you know, professionalism of our staff, we trust in the experience of our staff in dealing with discussions with students about everything. And, you know, the level of experience of our staff, the professionalism of our staff, I think is very comforting in thinking about the kinds of things that are discussed in the classroom. So this was really, you know, a topic of, you know, are there things, you know, that we need to do in addition to what's available? Are there things, you know, I mean, you said as part of your reflection, you know, you're talking again to staff. In earlier meetings, you know, Bob had mentioned, you know, that he had, you know, been checking in periodically, like how are people doing, you know, are people feeling, you know, that there's, there's things that, you know, that they don't have, that they need tools that they don't have. So I open it up. I don't know if people have comments or suggestions or... I know, I know the professional, professional development committee is a group that looks at what might be missing, you know, in total or, you know, on a smaller basis. So I don't know if they've had a chance to talk about some of this as well. I don't know how often they get together and, you know, and set things. But that would be a group that I would think, you know, maybe looking at whether there's other things that staff in general might be looking to have or to access or to learn about or attend, whatever. Okay. Yeah, Karen?
I would just say that I share your thoughts. We obviously have exemplary staff. We trust their professional judgment. I think in all of us, at all times, in most areas, there's room for improvement. And I just can't emphasize enough that I feel very strongly that there should be a robust conversation going on in the upper grades that is certainly age-appropriate about current events as they actually are. And I just think that, given how times have, you know, we're sort of in changing times, that it would be helpful to have some updated professional development about how to facilitate those robust conversations that I don't know in all instances aren't happening, but it's my sense that they're not happening. And I just think that in these times when the air, you know, the oxygen in the room is frequently given to people who express the loudest extremist voices, I think it's very important to teach our kids how to have respectful conversations, to respect differences of opinion, and that that can happen in the classroom around robust conversation on current events.
Yeah, I agree with what Karen's saying. And I feel like, you know, I don't trust that the teachers here, you know, have, you know, undergone the kind of training that they need for the current, you know, for the current times that we're in around, you know, around civil discourse, around the whole range of topics that are, you know, every day presented to, you know, kids and, you know, talked about at school, especially in upper grades. So I definitely agree that, you know, there are models out there that have been around for a long time and, you know, that are, you know, that, you know, should be looked at and, you know, it would make, you know, it doesn't make, it doesn't make, you know, and I don't know if the entire gist of this conversation was that, you know, we're relying on equal professional development than they've had in the past and training. But I would certainly suggest that there be, you know, more updated and, you know, rounded training provided to teachers of all grades. Because it's not just in the upper grades that kids are, you know, hearing and reacting to the world that we live in.
Okay. Another voice heard. Did anybody else have any comments? Oh, is that me? No? Yes, Nancy?
Farm bar division.
Yeah, just echoing Karen and Emily, some of this also doesn't need to be, it's so tricky. I don't think any of us really, there's a shift, right? There's a political, titanic shift in our political landscape right now and that affects greatly what's in the headlines. So I think that's, that's something that we may have looked to other resources and institutions to help supplement. And I was a parent chaperone on the Salmon River trip this past week and I loved it. I absolutely loved it. But I did pause for a moment to think, my child's in fourth grade. I know social studies is a major component in the social studies curriculum. This was an hour and 15-minute trip to the Salmon River, which again, I loved. But would it have been also interesting to go to the Tenement Museum in New York City or to go to a current event, some type of photography exhibit? Or some other supplemental place where we might be able to have the questions, sort of have the content, present the questions to help supplement the discussion? And I think sometimes we can leverage educators in other places. For I know many of the museums, there's Irish Museum in Hampton that costs, I think, $2 per student. At least that's what we charge our entry for fourth graders who come to the museum that I work at. So I just wanted to sort of suggest that we leverage the resources around us if we're going to make some supplemental trips, not suggesting to go over to Salmon River. Just to add other things.
When we look at our social studies curriculum, these will be things I think that we should incorporate and consider.
Did anybody else have any conversation? I'm sure. No? Okay. Thank you. Okay. We are on the facilities committee. I know we keep canceling you, Karen. I am so sorry about that. We schedule it and then we cancel it because there's like two other meetings, so...
We're going to have one in May. We have to.
Okay. Okay. Finance, was there anything other than the, no?
It's a short meeting before the finance meeting.
Okay. Okay. Kate Liaison?
No.
Okay. All right. In upcoming meetings, I don't know that there's, you know, a lot of discussion, but if you have specific issues, the strategic plan update is obviously what Bob presented to us in January and, you know, how things are going. You know, he told us about the things that, you know, had been started, you know, visits to other places, see what other people are doing. And, you know, the vision mission committee started. So does anybody have anything specific that they're looking for Bob to update us on or just go over the components of the plan, the goal, each of the goals and tell us where he's at?
Yeah, I mean, I'm interested to know kind of more specifically, you know, when you kind of touched upon, you know, the professional development or different things that teachers have got that are related to strategic planning to have a better sense of both what they've got and, you know, kind of where you think that's, you know, leading them to, if you have a sense of that.
Specific PD topics that we either have done or are planning or are part of a menu of things as we look forward to the next...
Right. More specifics about where you're at with planning processes.
All right. Anybody else specifics for that?
I would just add, the thing I'm most interested in is just to hear the progress that you've made on the project-based and school-wide enrichment fund. What, where people have gone, what you've taken away and where you are in terms of the timeline, make a specific representation with regard to that.
I'd echo that request.
All right. And then the tri-state update is really where we are with math, what feedback we got and what's the, you know, kind of the rest of the plan for rollout, the tri-state issues.
And I think, and to pardon me if I'm wrong, that part of the budget was going to affect the tri-state visit petition?
Not the one that just happened.
It's done already.
Right. We did tri-state for math. So the budget cut for not enrolling a tri-state for next year...
Was not going to affect this process.
No, no.
That was going to be on another topic?
No, there was no site.
We didn't have a plan for another tri-state evaluation. We did what, four, five, six years ago? We did reading and writing? When did we do reading and writing?
Dues are lower in the year that we don't have any site visits or anything planned.
So you still have to pay that?
Well...
Right. Unless you want to participate. So if you don't want to...
A professional development aspect of it or something?
They offer, yeah, they offer, so for instance, even next year, if we had said, okay, we're going to delay, postpone a full visit, a full three-day visit, in the past, we still would have paid, you know, $7,000 or more to just be participants in the organization. It would entitle staff members to go to this, that, and the other thing. I'm not so sure. Don't get me wrong, we have taken advantage of some of those things, but not necessarily everything.
Those are visits to other schools to do what schools have come to us to do. That's what that entails.
I was just wondering what we're not going to be getting based on, that it's not our budget next year.
And we haven't actually engaged in tri-state activity every year.
Well, it might be helpful just to, just to kind of reflect on some of the thoughts from the visit that we will be talking about. By the way, that tri-state update that's there upcoming meeting presentation, based upon the availability of the presenters are, it may either be in May or June, I'm not sure which month, it's going to come in one of those months. But one of the reflection points was, it's a rich, robust process. We have really high-level, very high-level faculty and staff in this building. And so I think one of the reflection points is not to take away from the people who come and visit and give us thoughts and feedback, but also if they hadn't been here to do this, would you, would you have been able to come up with some of the same types of reflections and some of the same types of next steps? I think the answer to that was yes. So while I'm not saying it's not an important process, I think we have a lot of parts of the strategic plan that we're, we have the emotion. So I think it's a, it's a time, it's perhaps an ideal time to kind of step back for a little bit and get some other things moving ahead and then see how the tri-state may fit into that in the future if we decide to, you know, reengage.
And one of the things that I think we've always been told is the preparation for the tri-state visit, that structure, the requirements, the documentation, all of that activity is when we probably come up with the exact same ideas and changes and like, oh jeez, why are we doing that kind of discussion? That the tri-state visitors, you know, that's always been my understanding. By the time we get all that done, we know exactly what we need to do differently and that's exactly the feedback we get, you know, from the people who visit. So the process of getting ready for that visit is of value and probably, you know, of equal value to the actual feedback from the tri-state visits. At least that's my understanding from the readers and writers workshop and from the math visits that we've had and evaluations. So, so again, if we're doing those things internally and using, you know, structures that get us to the same result, you know, we're looking at, you know, at other topics now and other curriculum and, you know, so we need to be focusing a little internally for a little while.
Right.
Anything else on either of these topics that people want to, want to make sure is incorporated? Okay. New business. We want new business.
Move that we grant a leave of absence for the 2017 E22 year to Danielle Loco.
Tell us what's up. What's going on?
Danielle's family is growing. Thank you. That's how we call it. Maybe we have a very easy name, but anyway. So, yeah, so she's very excited and we're looking at, June is the exciting month, I think, right? Early June? So, so she will be very, very messed during the course of the year and we will, it's not an easy position, I would just say it's not an easy position to fill on a permanent basis. On a temporary basis, it's even more tricky. So, so she's technology.
Library.
And she, you know, she, yeah, so she's library media and mostly in the technology area. When she first came into the organization, she was sort of ahead of foot both camps.
Okay. Any discussion? No? All... But yeah. Yeah. And these are always, you know, tricky things. Can we deny it?
Well, that's the part of it. There are some people who are saying, you know, we have extended days. So why don't you just extend it a little bit more, you know?
Can't you just see the baby on the news? That would be fun. All right. All those in favor? Okay. All right. And let's see, we have public comment again? Marshall, did anybody sneak up over there? Nope.
Move it here.
Second. Okay. Wow. All those in favor?